Okay, we are back in session. Again, my apologies. The next speaker is Andreas Mata, followed by Willard Hunter, followed by Robert Martin. Go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
Thank you all. Men and women of the council, my name is Andres Benito Mata. Last time I was here, I spoke with you all regarding the McClendon lawsuit and the effect that it has had on private property. And thankfully, due to some efforts that I've had with the community around me, I have been able to come up with a solution that private property owners can better assert their rights in accordance with the McClendon lawsuit. The issue that I bring to the table here this evening is the effect that the McClendon lawsuit has had on those constituents and residents that live near public property. As it stands right now, APD has to carry around laminated cards that detail which offenses they can and cannot make arrests for. And they're also very reluctant to issue citations. As a result of that, one of the properties that I live nearby that is city-maintained is the Joseph J. Baca Plaza that is in Mr. Benton's district. After I had spoken with you all in September about the concerns I had regarding the loitering, regarding the trespassing that was occurring in that area, there was a shooting right out my front door. When I stepped out my front door, I saw four people with pistols drawn. One of the individuals that loiters at the Park Daily is a witness, and Albuquerque Police Department cannot get him to come in for questioning, arrest him on any of the other charges that would have been available to them with the McClendon lawsuit. So this is putting a lot of people at risk in the neighborhood because that same individual proceeded to get into a knife fight and also a syringe fight with another individual right outside my front door. I understand that the goal of this administration is to not criminalize homelessness, but at the same time, those of us who are impoverished and living below the poverty line are suffering because of this lawsuit. And as I would like to, you know, point out to everyone, my two constituents before me that were forcibly removed from the chamber, that is a daily occurrence right outside my front door that all my friends and family have to witness. Thank you.
Thank you. Willard Hunter? And the last speaker under general public comment will be Robert Martin. Welcome, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, President Sanchez and council members. It's been a long time since I've spoken before you folks, and it's nice to be back. And I want to thank you very much for the proclamation for recognizing the 100th anniversary of Armistice Day. And I want to reiterate that one of the whereas it says Armistice Day is commemorated each year on the 11th of November with a ringing of bells at 11:00 a.m. to symbolize the desire of peoples around the world as a whole to a peaceful future away from war. And my concern is that we've really gotten away from that. It feels like Veterans' Day, this now is really to commemorate, is to commemorate the continuance of war which we have had, we know, since the end of World War II. And we need to really get back to recognize that Armistice Day is to recognize peace and not war. And I think we need to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Hunter. Robert Martin? Welcome.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. I'm here actually is at the request of a number of people that have been approaching me for the past five years. I used to have a show on public access. And ever since the quote-unquote "production facilities" were shut down and given to U-Public, which I think is an Orwellian name, quite frankly, I've been approached by people in restaurants, online, in banks, in supermarkets, and asking me, you know, what is going on? Because they now see the people's podium now occupied by some group of people who are now airing commercials. So why are they doing this for profit? What's going on? You know, they're asking me about local origination, which doesn't seem to be existing anymore except for, you know, some high school football games. And people actually want to focus and bring light, which is the best disinfectant. And I'm addressing this to Mr. Harris about controversies. That's the point of public access. It's the people's only podium to air controversies, to find out what is going on, and to have live programs where people can call in and air their views. This is not going on anymore. So I contend that this is a squelching of the First Amendment rights that the people have. The Constitution and the amendments are a list of commandments to admonish the government not to infringe. It's a thou shalt not do this, thou shalt not do that. Well, guess what? You all are doing it by allowing this bogus contract to continue. Nearly $400,000 a year versus $175,000 a year? People are now getting it. They're understanding that something is not right.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. That concludes the general public comments. We are now under announcements. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 14th at 5:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, November 15th at 5:00 p.m. in the Benson-Egrego chambers.
And we are now on item 12. There are no public hearings this evening. Let's move on to item 13, approvals. The first item is item A. That is EC-227, Mayor's Recommendation of Souter, Miller &amp; Associates for Citywide on Call Surveying Services. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a couple of questions about this one and the next one. We have a bid process in order to let contracts like this. We have a very set way of doing it, and normally it's an independent, it is an independent group that scores them. They come back to the mayor for approval. I find it very interesting in EC-18227 that the mayor has chosen the second-highest bidder versus the highest bidder, which is pretty much standard. You accept the one that is, receives the highest number of points from the group, the independent group that scores these proposals. And the justification, in quotes, is the group chosen has never received a surveying contract with the city before, and it is in the city's best interest to give them an opportunity to demonstrate their surveying experience. So my question is, do we have that right to justify every time we have a bidder who has no experience that the city wants? Can we just give them that contract because we want to and not follow our own rules of the recommendations by that committee? It looks like, Mr. Rayal, you're the one in the hot seat.
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, first and foremost, the procurement process or the SAC selection committee process, as you may have been made aware of, I'm sure, by council staff, gives the administration, in this case, the mayor, the prerogative to select from the top three recommendations made by the SAC selection committee. In this particular case, the committee scored all of the proposals, and it is true that Souter, Miller was scored number two. However, the difference between the first and second place is all but three points, so virtually they are pretty much at tides. Secondly, the mayor and the administration's position has been and continues to be that we'd like to give other companies an opportunity to do some work with the city. This is a surveying contract to do multiple projects that are, that the city would have for different departments, and it was the administration's position that BHI, which has had numerous contracts with the city, that we give a new company, a local company, an opportunity to participate in the program, and it's well within the rules and the procurement processes for the SAC selection process.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Rayal. I understand the justification that's being given to us. However, the SAC process includes a point deduction for firms who have current work with the city. Therefore, how can we, if we're not going to give our business to the highest bidder or the one with the highest score, even though they have had a point deduction because they are doing business with the city, can, why do we even bother with the process? Why don't we just go out for whomever we want and say, how much are you going to charge us for this job and do it? I believe that this is rather disingenuous to have a committee with points. Having served on a few of those committees, there's a real good thought process put in it, and I know it's only a couple of points, but a couple of points means a lot if it is the person getting or not getting the selection on a process that's been set out by the city and has been followed, as far as I know, for the last, at least, two administrations. I understand that you and the mayor have a justification for this, but I think it is very questionable, especially when we have the next process on our agenda that did the same thing. So it just doesn't smell good. Thank you.
Counselor Benton? Counselor Benton?
I've been on the losing end of a lot of those competitions, and I guess I've won one or two of them over all the years that I've worked as an architect in professional practice. I think, I do support the administration's intent here because the way it works is, really, in practice, is that with these kind of professional services, those who have more of them have a bigger resume every time. It's just going to work out that way. They're going to have a better resume. It doesn't necessarily mean they're less professionally capable. And I think it is in the city's interest to broaden the group who, the overall group that does have practical experience on city projects or on whatever, in this case, surveying work. So that's just kind of the nature of the beast, and it's, in this case, where there's such a close, and on the next one as well, apparently, where the point difference was so minimal, I think there's something to be said for this prerogative of the mayor's.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I understand what you're saying. However, the companies who bid, who have current work with the city are deducted points. So we already have an equalizing system in place. I just think that this is questionable. I'm curious about it, and I'm not comfortable with it. And that is my opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Counselor Winter.
Mr. President, Mr. Rayal, and I, and I, I guess I just have the perception of it. And I think if, I mean, I understand getting new people involved in city work is a great idea, but why don't you change the process then? Change the point scores? Change something so at least there's a guide and a, you have to do this to get this. And that's just a problem because then, something like this, do we start getting involved in personalities, and we like this group better than we like that group? And that's just kind of where I think you can start getting into trouble.
Mr. President and Counselors, and Counselor Winter in particular, look, the SAC selection process is set up by the council. It does give the administration the prerogative to select from the top three recommended by the folks that are in the department. So I would just simply say that there is a number of ECs that have come to the council where the mayor has gone with the selection from the committee. In these particular cases, he felt that there was an opportunity to spread the work around and give others an opportunity. For the most part, the administration follows the process on most any given, if you will, contract. This one and the one that you'll see next are two that the mayor felt that the points were so close that we'd give someone else an opportunity to get some city business. So I just want to make sure you all know, this isn't that the process is broken. This is simply that this is a process that's been set up by the council and that you do give the administration that prerogative to make that decision. And the points are so close. These are very, all three, top three here on each of these are very reputable firms in town that do good work. And so giving and spraying the work around is something that the mayor felt is good for the community and good for these businesses.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I also, you know, always want to see the underdog get a little bit of a lift. And so, and I think that the way that this ordinance is written, you know, the procurement ordinance, or I guess that's a procurement, that is built in so that, you know, they get, they do get a little bit of a lift. So there's, there were three things that I seem to recall, this was from last meeting, that could be done, made exceptions if it was under 1%, which this is not. It's 1.18, what, something else percent, a little bit over 1%. And then if, the other one was, if the major, the mayor had a compelling reason or something. I don't see a compelling reason. Not only that, but this committee, the SAC, were the mayor's folks. Mayor's administration selected these people. So, you know, given that, I would have thought that the numbers would have been a little bit differently. I mean, I hate to spell it out, you know, terms like that, but it's the truth. You know, if this is the way that the mayor wanted to go, and he had some of his people on these committees, why didn't that happen?
Mr. President and Counselor, I would just say to you very clearly that the process of selecting and people to serve on these committees is, again, prescribed to the ordinance and is very much, from our perspective, from the administration's perspective, a very professional review by qualified folks at the city level. So Counselor Gibson, the idea that we would go ahead and appoint folks to give us what we want is not what this is about. This is about reviewing those that respond and giving the mayor the top three recommendations and the administration's making a decision that spreading the work around is good for the city and is good for these companies. And that was the sole basis for making this determination, at least and particularly with these two firms.
Follow-up, I'm sorry, just a follow-up.
Go ahead and proceed.
So you just made my point for me. You just reinforced my point that, you know, we have this set up for a reason. You know, we have the three, the three things that the mayor can use to make an exception, and none of those three are met that I can see. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you. One last point. Again, let me stress that the selection firms remove points for respondents who have work with the city. And yet, we still chose the second responder, the second highest. So is never having received the, a survey contract a factor that makes it okay, that the first rank did better, but now isn't going to get it because this company's never received a survey contract? However, they just completed a recently, an on-call engineering service contract. So obviously, they do work, have done work, are doing work, do work for the city. How can we penalize, and number one, by taking off points when we score them in the first place and then just saying, meh, okay, I like the other one better, or I want this one to get this? That doesn't seem to be very comfortable transparency to me. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of EC-227. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? Those opposed?
No.
That carries on a six to three vote. All those opposed say no?
No.
Okay, that carries in a six to three vote. Okay, let's move on to the next item. That is EC-228, the Mayor's Recommendation of Lee Kaminsky Architects in Architectural Design and Construction of a Computer-Mirror Facility at the Albuquerque International Sunport. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego. Counselor Jones.
Don't need to make the same argument. It is the same argument. Exactly the same thing happened. Number one responder was passed over, and the number two responder was chosen. Again, if we have a process, we should follow our process. I don't believe just because someone, and incidentally, this firm has also had contracts with the city. I think we're, I think we're setting a precedent here that is not comfortable. I know it's not comfortable for me, and I hope it's not comfortable for the people watching this, and certainly not comfortable for the people we invite to bid on our jobs if, in fact, we pick and choose who we want anyway, no matter what the process that we have set in place says.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rayal.
I just want to make sure, I respect your perspective, Counselor, in this particular case, just because it is important. This is the process. The process by ordinance does give the mayor and the administration the prerogative to choose from the top three. And that's what we've done. And I just want to make sure that there is nothing else beyond this that's simply a, the process that's in place.
Okay, let's go to Counselor Borrego, then Counselor Benton.
Well, you know, just kind of for the sake of the people who have, who are in, I guess, our audience, I actually have sat on the SAC committee as a city employee, and I was not selected as a mayor representative. I actually reviewed contracts in my career, and I, you know, there is latitude within that process, and I think that, you know, there are certain recommendations from that committee to the mayor's office. And at that point, the mayor's office determines whether or not, you know, there's enough, I guess there's too much space or there's not enough space in the, in the, in the process of, you know, giving them the points. And I think that, you know, the process is clear. So I don't understand, you know, why we're giving the impression that we're doing something that's not, you know, that's not kosher, because the process is very clear. It does allow for the committee to recommend, and that's what the committee does. They recommend the mayor. So, you know, I, I'm comfortable supporting, supporting these recommendations from the mayor.
Counselor Benton, then Counselor Winter.
Yeah, just quickly to agree with Counselor Borrego, there's nothing improper about this. It's totally within what's already laid out. Counsel has two prerogatives. One, we can go back in and change the SAC ordinance. The other thing is, is what we're doing right here and now, which is debating whether we agree or disagree with what the mayor says. If we vote as a majority to disagree, then it goes back, and they have to come back with a different recommendation. So let's just have a vote on it.
Counselor Winter.
Mr. President, and Counselor Benton's absolutely right, because this is part of the process, and the mayor does his process, and then we do our process. And I guess we could relook at the ordinance, and if we feel there's a perception that it's not fair, then we can change that. But we're doing our due diligence up here, too.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Very quickly, Mr. Rayal, just could you clarify for me about process? Because I think we know some of the, get into the weeds about this. But to clarify, the RFP is out, the firms respond, but the firms that are ultimately selected or recommended, at least by the committee that move forward to the mayor, have all been determined to be qualified. So in other words, there is a process upfront, as I recall, that judges whether the firm is qualified. And at this point, qualified firms move forward to the mayor, and that is this process, right?
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, that's correct. That's the way the process is set up through the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Rayal. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second for approval of EC-228. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? Those opposed?
No.
That carries on a six to three vote. Okay, we are now on item C, EC-243, and that is the Development Agreement with Hope Works and Yes Housing, Inc., utilizing $4 million, $2 million is the City Affordable Housing Funds, and $2 million from Bernaleo County Funds for the construction of Hope Village, a 42-unit, single-site, permanent supportive housing development project in the Wells Park neighborhood. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. And we have five individuals that are signed up to speak, or six. Reverend Seth Finch, Mark Fidel, Harry Galler, Steve Ross, Doreen McKnight, and Merritt Tully. Once your name has been called, come to the front and be prepared to speak. Reverend Finch, go and proceed.
President of council, city councilors, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I imagine, like many of you, I am a fairly busy person, and so when I had somebody coming to ask me to sit on yet another board, I wasn't real excited about that conversation. But when Greg Morris, the director of Hope Works, showed up at my office, he had this little lapel pin on that said, "Housing first." And I had just spent two years in a master's program learning, how do we best serve people experiencing homelessness in our communities? And that was what I had come down to, that conclusion. And to see him walk in with that pin, I was immediately intrigued. And I asked him, tell me more about this. And he began to lay out a vision for how we begin to change the situation for people in our community experiencing homelessness, and this is the first step in that process. It has been used around the country, around North America, and it has been demonstrated to work in ways that other programs have failed. This is the way that we can begin to change this situation in our city. We can take a leading edge on this like other cities in this country, and we can begin to shift our own situation, empower people in this community, and find new ways to improve our own city. So thank you all very much for considering this. I'm very excited to say I did agree to serve with Hope Works, and every day that I'm working with them, I'm finding more and more to be enthusiastic about because they have a vision to how we change this. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here, Reverend. Mark Fidel, followed by Harry Galler. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Mark Fidel. From 2012 until 2017, I served as the Chair of the Board of Directors for St. Martin's Hospitality Center, now known as Hope Works. I was there when we brought in the former executive director, Rusty Smith, and I'd like to offer a little bit of historical perspective, that if it wasn't for his work and the staff under him at the time, we wouldn't be here today. I was subsequently on the, on the committee that brought in Greg Morris as the executive director, and it's his vision and his staff that is now leading the way. I'd also like to acknowledge the council members that have expressed their public support for this, for this initiative. And I'd also like to thank those council members who have shown opposition, because it, if you don't have this level of discourse, then you get blank checks that are being written unnecessarily. And so I honestly appreciate the contrarian perspective within a dignified setting. And thank you for the work you all are doing. I admire, I'm not sure I envy, but I do admire the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Galler, followed by Steve Ross.
Hello, Mr. President and councilman. My name is Harry Galler, and I am on the board of Hope Works. I am also one of their past clients. I had the privilege of sleeping on the streets of Albuquerque for two years, and they helped me, they got me off the streets with counseling and just encouragement. And the person that I am now, as the person that started the program, are two very different people. And having this onsite housing, really, there are some of the people that need constant care and to be watched over, you know, any kind of help they need, and having it all together in one is so much more, you know, better, and having everything close by than if you have it, like, some people have said, far away, because you're putting all your eggs in one basket there. And if it doesn't work, you spend all that money for what? With what we're doing, slowly building it, we have the option, in case things might change in the future, to slowly redirect how we grow, and doing it this way is, ensures that, that we can do it all properly and take everything in as it comes. And I just want to thank you all for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry, for your story and also for serving on the board. Steve Ross.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez and council members. Steve Ross, I'm the executive director of the Supportive Housing Coalition of New Mexico. I've had the privilege of meeting with some of you individually about the work that we do, and so maybe- do, and so maybe coming from a little bit different perspective tonight, here to support the Hope Works Village as an organization that is a leader in providing the Housing First model in permanent housing. We work with some 500-plus homeless folks and having them housed permanently and working with wraparound services. And as an organization that partners with Hope's Village, we're here to, to tell you, we'd like to urge you to support this particular agreement. We're delighted to be able to see another Housing First, one-site model come into our community to help homeless people, and as we work with, along with Hope Works, the most vulnerable part of this group, in other words, people that have mental illness, those that are suffering behavioral health issues. This is where a lot of our focus is. And so we're really pleased to continue to partner with Hope Works in being able to bring about an end to homelessness for good here in the community. So thank you for that opportunity. Thank you for the work, and thank you for all of you, what you do, and we certainly urge you to support this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Doreen McKnight. And Merritt Tully will be the last speaker on this agenda item. Welcome.
Mr. President, council, I represent the Wells Park Neighborhood Association. I am the president of that association. We just want to state that we appreciate the city administration, specifically Carol Pierce, who's the Director of Family and Community Services, for their responsiveness in permitting the community members to comment and have input on this development agreement. And while this may be considered an extraordinary step, or extraordinary in allowing us to have comment and input on that, it should not be. It should be the norm. And I really encourage and hope that the administration and the city continues that effort in the future in allowing community members to have input on huge development projects like this, that can have a huge impact on the surrounding neighborhood, in order to hold such projects accountable and to ensure their effectiveness in what they're trying to do. We do still have some concerns and unanswered questions, but, and we believe the development agreement is still lacking in measurable outcomes. But at this point, we are still in development stages of creating a Good Neighbor Agreement with Hope Works, and we hope that that will be finished soon, so that we can move forward with positive communications as a neighborhood with Hope Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. Merritt Tully.
Hi there, President Sanchez, Counsel Benton, councilors. I'm Merritt Tully. I'm the current president of the Near North Valley Neighborhood Association and a board member of the North Valley Coalition. Four years ago, when representatives of the Coalition, Near North Valley, Santa Barbara, Martinez Town, Stronghurst, and Wells Park neighborhoods formed an our ad hoc committee on homelessness and started meeting with Counsel Benton, our goal was to broaden the conversation about homelessness, to encourage the city, county, and homeless service providers to address the impacts of concentrated homelessness on our neighborhoods, to bring funding and a thoughtful approach to addressing the economic and psychic toll on neighborhoods. We have not been saying not in my backyard, and we do support housing. What we've been saying is look at the bigger picture and keep our neighborhoods from suffering from disinvestment and a decreased quality of life. We are very grateful to Counsel Benton and to Carol Pierce and her staff for providing us with an opportunity to improve upon the development agreement between the city and St. Martin's Yes Housing for the single-site supportive housing project. Is the agreement perfect? Well, of course not. From our view, it is still lacking in the kind of specificity necessary for the city to measure whether the services of St. Martin's are effective at reducing homelessness. That said, the agreement is much better. It now contains a section, Exhibit K, that's a real start at addressing neighborhood concerns and increasing accountability in the expenditure of public funding. We hope the collaboration between the city providers and neighborhoods in this project is repeated with subsequent projects and contracts. We'll all be the better for it. Again, many thanks to Counsel Benton and to Carol Pierce for enabling this collaboration.
Thank you, Ms. Tully. Counsel Benton.
I just want to kind of reiterate, we, we first made the commitment of funding of this project a while back, knowing that this agreement still had to be developed and, and worked out. And at that time, it was pointed out that, that this project, and this type of project, we need more than just this one, of course, is a top priority of the Behavioral Health Initiative and our partnership with the county. It's not the only priority, it's, it's one of the very top priorities, however, of that initiative. And I, I agree with, with Ms. McKnight and Ms. Tully about the process. It has been, in my experience, the most open process and the most scrutiny provided by the neighborhoods to a project that I've, I've ever seen, and, and especially a project that, that has connotations, whether they're, they're correct or not, about, about the residents who will, who will live there and so forth, that raises people's antennae when, when they hear it's, it's going to be placed in their neighborhood. So, but that scrutiny, as, as was said, has produced a better, a better agreement, and I do appreciate also the Department of Family and Community Services and its director and the administration of being open to that discussion with the neighborhood, and, and also to Hope Works for being open to that discussion. I lived in the neighborhood myself from 1980 to 1990, and that was the time in which St. Martin's came to the neighborhood. It was a change to the neighborhood, those services being provided. But St. Martin's, starting at that time and up until now, hasn't had any housing on site. They've just been providing day services and people coming and going. This project will take people off of the streets and putting them, and put them into supportive housing. I got a great report from the new downtown, I keep calling it the Mini Command. What's the correct, the APD? The, the APD, Public Safety District for Downtown. I think that was some old language that I've been banding around for too long. But, but a great report from them, that with the assistance of Albuquerque Street Connect, which this council, I really appreciate, during our budget, we, we added money for them. In the last operating budget, fifteen people were taken off the streets of downtown, just in the last month, by Albuquerque Street Connect. And they need places like this to go, and where, where they will not only be housed, but have somebody really checking in on them and helping them get the services they need to get back into regular society. So I appreciate the support of, of the council and, and everyone who's worked hard on this. Very much appreciate the support of the Burnley County as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Borrego, and then Counsel Davis, and then Counsel Jones.
You know, I worked in the downtown neighborhoods for many years as a planner, and I've watched these neighborhoods, you know, with the sensitivity of just all of these populations moving through, you know, knowing that there's always someone like Merritt Tully in the crowd to ensure that things are looking, I mean, we are looking at everything in a very detailed way. And I worked with Merritt for probably twenty or thirty years on different development agreements and, and projects. And it, it's very comforting to know that people like her are working, are continuing to work in the communities and, and work in these neighborhoods that are sensitive. And I think that, you know, as I drive downtown, because I do live in the northwest and almost in Rio Rancho, I see more and more homeless on a daily basis, and people are asking me, what are you guys doing about the homeless? What, you know, what's the council doing? What's the mayor doing? And it appears, I think, to sometimes the average people out there that we're not doing anything, but we are. And, and I think this is a really great first step. And Counsel Benton, I, I know that you, you've been in a difficult place. The homeless issue is something that affects all of us. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that, in terms of why people are homeless, because it's not just one population, and we can't just take them and put them in a place and say, oh, yeah, let's forget about them. You know, we have to actually learn to deal with these issues. And learning from other cities is really important as well. And I think, you know, we've looked to other, you know, other communities, and if you go around the country, you, it's, it's as if nobody has a really good answer, because there are so many different types of populations that we're dealing with, veterans, you know, the mentally ill, the drug addicts, the alcoholics. I mean, there are so many different problems, and you can't address every situation always. So I think that it's really important that we're taking this first step, and we're actually, you know, showing the community that we are sensitive to these issues, and that we are concerned about, you know, the people who are sleeping on the streets, like this gentleman that was here tonight earlier. I mean, I commend him after two years of being on the street and being able to come before us and have that courage to share his story. But the more we deal with these issues as a community, I think, you know, the more we'll be able to start moving in a positive direction for our city. So, you know, I, I want to thank people like Merritt for having that tenacity to work. I want to thank people like this gentleman who's in the audience tonight for coming forward and sharing his story, and for Hope Works, for, you know, coming forward with a, a solution. And so also to the county, and, and especially Council, Commissioner O'Malley, who, and, and Counsel Benton, for starting to work on these issues for us. So, thank you.
Counsel Davis, and then Counsel Jones.
Very briefly, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, you know, my opposition to this project a few months ago was based on the outpouring of folks from the neighborhood who were as skeptical as I was that we could get this many people moving in the same direction around the same thing so quickly. But I want to acknowledge, and I appreciate that Merritt and Ms. McKnight and others from the neighborhood stepped up and fulfilled their commitment to be partners in trying to figure this out. St. Martin's and Hope Works showed us a real commitment to listening and partnering with the neighborhood on a new sort of process and the anxiety that that sort of brings. And Counsel Benton, who, you know, was at the forefront of bringing everybody together and keeping that going with Director Pierce. So I, I am, I was surprised and skeptical that the city could get that done that quickly. But it's a real testament to the fact that folks want to get this done and see the need, and I appreciate the folks who stepped up to do it. It doesn't happen often, but I, I agree with Merritt and Ms. McKnight. This is a great model for us to do the next sort of project, and I hope we can do it as quickly the next time around. So thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this could be a marvelous project. Everyone's come together. It, it looks great. The money's there to build. My question is, have we ever seen a budget? Do we have any idea what the recurring costs and the annual expenses will be? Ms. Nyer, do you have any answer to that?
Ms. Nyer.
Council President Sanchez, Counsel Jones. So the, the deal with this project is that we built it, and the county is going to operate it. So after our portion is done, we will then hand that over to the county, who is either, has either issued or is getting ready to issue the RFP for the services to operate it through. So also, that's part of the reason why some of the concerns about sort of monitoring the progress of how these, how this project is performing, doesn't really belong in the development agreement, which has to do with building the site, but would be more appropriately placed in that county's agreement. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you. And, and it doesn't say that anywhere in what we see. It says the county will provide an additional $1 million per year to pay for behavioral health services offered at the site and rental assistance for the residents. It says nothing about the ongoing operating expenses. Do we have a contract to that end with the county?
Ms. Nyer.
Council President Sanchez, I, I see Counsel Benton wants to address this, but I'll just briefly say that, yes, we do have a memorandum of understanding with the county on this topic.
Which, I'm sorry if I may, Mr. President. Which says specifically that the county will pay all operating expenses to include the behavioral health services on an annual basis?
Counsel Sanchez, Counsel Jones would be happy to provide you with a copy of that. I don't want to misspeak about it, but yes, we are not on, part of that continuing expense. Counsel Benton. Counsel Benton, may I have more? Thank you.
So Counsel Jones, within the, the whole behavioral health initiative, you know, there is a broad spectrum of behavioral health services that are accounted for, that include both city and county services. So they're not reflected directly in this project. It's anticipated, though, that, that the supportive services within this project will take advantage of, will be taking advantage of existing programs that, that the, the city and the county already have in place. So, you know, there's not a specific, and also, we have to recognize that within these populations, there's a spectrum of people with different needs and different types of services that are needed. There could be veteran services, et cetera. That the operating expense of daily, for instance, of, of maintenance of the building, water, sewer, electric, that sort of thing, is, is really what's paid for by the housing vouchers. So that's the ongoing building operating costs. And then you also had that question about the, the social services cost. Those are probably harder to identify, because they're, they're, they're being accessed across various programs that are already in existence.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you. And if I may just make that as clear as possible to me, so that means the city will have no additional expenses on an annual basis, on a recurring basis for these, because everything's going to be absorbed, the city share to include all costs for vouchers will not be an increase in any of our expenses in any way.
Counsel Benton, Ms. Nyer.
You know, my, my understanding is, again, that, that the, the target population, these, these residents are already part of the type, target population that we're looking to serve within the Behavioral Health Initiative, various programs, city and county, and federal and local. So, but...
Yeah, Council President Sanchez, Counsel Jones, I think, you know, to the extent that we increase behavioral health services or housing vouchers in general, some of that might go to benefit the residents of this project, but it's not like we're going to be getting a bill from the project every year to pay for expenses.
Counsel Jones.
One more, and then I'll stop. Who's paying for the utilities and the ongoing maintenance of the property itself? And the recurring capital repairs and structural repairs?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counsel Jones, I'll invite Doug Chaplin up here to fill in those details.
Thank you.
Chaplin, go and proceed.
Mr. President, Counsel Jones, the, the utilities will be paid from rent. The, the county is paying for two pieces of this as an ongoing basis, and it's in the MOU itself. They're paying for the rental vouchers, they're providing rental vouchers for each and every unit, and they're paying for the services. And the rental voucher money will go in as the rent, as it does in any, any apartment complex, and then the expenses will come out, and one of those expenses is the utilities, and there is a budget that expresses that. And so we're confident there will not be any additional expense to the city of Albuquerque.
Counsel Jones, and then Counsel Winter.
Mr. Chaplin, I know you understand buildings. What happens with the ongoing capital repairs and expenses? Who pays for that?
Mr. President, Counsel Jones, the, the development agreement come to place that they will set aside replacement for reserves and capitalize future expenses and replacements as in any other real estate transaction.
Continue.
If I may, who is "they"?
Mr. President, Counsel Jones, will be the ownership entity that will be Hope Works.
So that, if I may, I'm sorry to keep...
Go and proceed.
Mr. President, so the city will have no obligation, is what I'm hearing, for any of the ongoing capital expenditures and recurring operating expenses of this facility, other than vouchers, and maybe expand our behavioral health costs? Is that what we understand?
Mr. President, Counsel Jones, yes, that's what we understand. This is set up as a traditional development agreement, where those expenses and those responsibilities lie with the ownership entity, and they're not with the city of Albuquerque.
Thank you.
Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the neighborhood leaders for coming down and, and really working hard to make your community better. I know that when we had the first hearing on this, there was a concern about St. Martin's Hope Works not being a very good neighbor. And I think that family and community, they met with me today, and they've done a really, really job of working this. And I think they've worked with the neighborhoods. I still, they do not have a good neighbor contract, and so I see everybody working. I haven't heard from Hope, from Hope Works yet about being a good neighbor and, and being a community, a good community partner, so I hope that they are. And we won't see this again, and so they're still working on that good neighbor contract. So I just hope the city holds everybody's feet to the fire, but thank you all very much for this.
Thank you, Counsel Winter. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval of EC-243. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are going to take a dinner break and return in 30 minutes. And also, I would ask that the security, we have a trespassing law and rules in place that Mr. Neminski and Mr. Tenenbaum have to follow those rules and be, they will not be able to attend immediately, I think it's for 30 or 90 days. Thank you.